Okay, it is seven thirty, so we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, November twenty first, two thousand and sixteen. I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocation, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we begin to enter the coveted holiday season at the end of the year, as a Batavia community, we are thankful for the many wonders and blessings and kind deeds that are showered upon our community. We are ever mindful of the tremendous volunteer spirit that exists within Batavia and as a town that is always willing to step forward and help those less fortunate than themselves. We are ever supportive also of the outstanding public services that we enjoy, be it the schools, or the parks, or the library, or the certainly, in the case of the city, the Public Works and the police and the fire department, and our paramedics, and the ambulance service. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them in this holiday season, as they go about their never-ending duties, regardless of what day it is, in responding to the help and support of our community. Also tonight, we want to take a moment and remember Robert Popick, who passed away a week ago. Robert is remembered by us as somebody who gave his heart and soul and work to the community of Batavia, working for us for almost forty-seven years. He holds the -- one of the records is one of the longest-serving city employees in the entire history of the city. And during that time, he served in a variety of different positions, but he left with a wealth of landmarks on our community that he did, including his vital role in creating of our nine-one-one consolidated center in Geneva, and also the work that he did in our community, both before and after retirement, in creating the display of historic windmills from Batavia's past that he loved and coveted and worked on till literally the day he died. We want to remember Bob with great fondness and appreciation for somebody who truly always carried Batavia in his heart and soul. So as always tonight, we also want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of liberties in the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all those serving with them, as they go about their vital mission of protecting our freedoms as American citizens. Tonight, we just ask for guidance and direction and understanding, as we debate and vote upon the various issues on our agenda, knowing that in the end, all of us here in the City Council are here tonight to vote in our best souls and minds as to what would be in the best interests of the community of Batavia, both today and in the future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Alderman Brown, with Julius and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Atech?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chancet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Silvadi?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Bottermann?
Here.
Saron?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen members of the Batavia City Council are present and accounted for this evening, so we do have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on our agenda. Alderman Atech, as Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this item?
I don't have any.
You have nothing to present?
No changes, no.
Okay. All right, then, we'll move to item number five, which is the Consent Agenda. Alderman Atech, would you present that, please?
Yes. The Consent Agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file Committee of the Whole Minutes for October eleventh and October eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen; Plan Commission Minutes for October nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen; Historic Preservation Minutes for October tenth, two thousand and sixteen; Two thousand and fifteen Police Pension Municipal Compliance Report; Two thousand and fifteen Fire Pension Municipal Compliance Report; Two thousand and sixteen Police Pension Tax Levy Request; Two thousand and sixteen Fire Pension Tax Levy Request. Approvals: November eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen Payroll in the amount of seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-one dollars; Accounts Payable Check Register in the amount of three-million-six-hundred-and-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-five dollars and twenty-four cents; City Council Minutes for August fifteenth, September nineteenth, and October twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen; Ordinance sixteen dash sixty-eight Vacation for a portion of a public vacation for a portion of a public alley behind six-thirty-nine Main Street; Approval of Liquor License for Salsa Verde Batavia Doing Business is Salsa Verde Restaurant at one-oh-seven North Batavia Avenue; Approval of the Liquor License for Energy City Brewing Doing Business is Energy City Brewing at two-and-a-half West Wilson Street, Suite A-1; Resolution sixteen dash eighty-eight dash R Authorizing City Administrator to Bind Insurance Coverage. I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atech, second by Alderman Chancet, for the approval of the Consent Agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Silvadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bottermann?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Okay, moving to item number six. We're very honored tonight to have the appointment of some new members to the Batavia Paid-On-Call Fire Department, and I'd ask Chief Deike if he would call those folks up and introduce them, and then we will do the swearing-in here in the middle of the council chambers. Chief Deike.
Good evening. I have four new paid-on-call. If they could come up here, please. They're young, aren't they? They are Patrick Hanahan, Mark Leepens, Olick Marlowe, and Brandon Waldschmidt. I'm happy to say that they are all graduates of Batavia High School, and they all graduated from the Fire Science Program at the Fox Valley Career Center, and they were the initiating, or the starting members of our Explorer Post that started earlier this year, and so we're very proud of them.
So, these are four appointments I wish to make. Would somebody care to make a motion confirming my appointment?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Rosado, second by Alderman Wolf, for the confirmation of the appointments. Kirk, please call the roll.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Silvadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bottermann?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Guys, this is always a big moment of, we have to organize this thing, because we have all these people who want to take pictures, and we got to get you on TV, so I need to have all four of you go up here into the center of the room and face out to the audience, so everybody can kind of see that. They can look at my back, but they all want to see you and take pictures.
Roman. Roman. Hand him your mic.
Thank you. As I was saying, basically, what we're going to do here is start a fire department career with all four of you, and I know you've been working with us, but now you're officially on the truck, so to speak. And so we wish you all the very, very best in the days ahead, and we thank you for stepping forward and offering your services to our community, because I think, as you already know, when you join the fire department, you never know what's going to come at you over that radio at any minute, twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, and so you really are throwing yourself into a situation which I think you'll find most rewarding but very challenging, and hopefully, we'll keep you guys around for a long, long time, and you'll be the firemen of the future, and the chiefs of the future, and be with us for many years to come. So with that wish, we wish you a very successful career, and if you would raise your right hands and repeat after me, I instate your names.
Aye.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of Paid-on-Call Firefighter?
To the position of Paid-on-Call Firefighter.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the City of Batavia?
In the City of Batavia.
In the Counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the Counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do Somwe swear?
Do Somwe swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I would faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of Paid-on-Call Firefighter?
To the position of Paid-on-Call Firefighter.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I don't know. I really don't, so. My kid gets to ride up the fire truck.
I don't know. I really don't, so.
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 I don't know.
I really don't, so.
I don't know.
I really don't, so.
I don't know.
I really don't, so.
I don't know.
I really don't, so.
I don't know.
I really don't, so.
Increased tax revenue generated by the development is being used to incentivize the development itself. In addition, all revenues that are collected through the TIF must be used within the boundaries of the TIF. Therefore, TIF revenues could never be used to fund any capital improvements outside of the TIF. The day-to-day operations of this city, by contrast, are funded through revenue sources, such as property taxes, sales tax, gas tax, liquor taxes, and fees, et cetera. While the budget presented is nearly balanced, it was recognized in 2016 that there is a shortfall in our current level of funding for stormwater drainage. Although $500,000 has been budgeted to address these issues, it has been recognized by both staff and city council that this funding is not enough. Gary Holm, Director of Public Works, has suggested that an ongoing funding level of $1 million per year is needed to address our current and future needs for drainage, maintenance, and repair, which would require an additional $500,000 that is not included in this year's budget. Of course, the most responsible way to fund an ongoing expense is through revenue. Unfortunately, current revenue is insufficient to do so. Therefore, staff is recommending a $300,000 increase in the tax levy this year and a $200,000 increase in the tax levy next year to cover the shortfall. In addition, staff is requesting to supplement the additional tax revenue in 2017 to meet the $500,000 need by allowing the transfer of $115,000 from the general fund reserves and allowing the $85,000 payment ordinarily made to the City Hall Capital Improvements Fund to instead be transferred to be used for drainage issues in 2017. I would now like to hand off the presentation to Peggy Colby, our Finance Director, to explain our budget in more detail.
Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing for public input and comments on the budget. As Laura mentioned, we've already had two Committee of the Whole meetings to discuss this. There won't be a request for a vote or anything tonight. We will have a meeting again on the Committee of the Whole on November 29th and ask for a recommendation at that time. I just have a few short slides giving a summary, but all of the detailed information on the budget is available on our website. And all of the questions that have been asked, the question and answers are also on our website. The total budget is $132 million, and of that, $86 million is operating. And we have a very large capital budget this year. The wastewater treatment plant has $22 million in capital improvements. So our general fund, which is our day-to-day operations, is $27 million. Our utilities, the bulk of it, is for the electric utility, but are $81 million. And then we have 17.3 million in capital. This is a summary of revenues and expenditures by fund, the surplus or deficit by fund, and then the ending reserves that each fund will have at the end of 2017. In particular, this budget calls for a $1 increase in the leaf and brush fee, raising it from $4 to $5. And then it also calls for a $300,000 property tax increase for drainage. And with the increase in the EAV, we are not expecting any increase to taxpayers because we're projecting that the rate will stay the same. And then this budget also calls for us to retain the home rule sales tax that was implemented in 2014 as a stopgap measure to help with rate relief for the electric utility. We're proposing that we retain that for use for the general fund. And then a one-cent gasoline tax to be collected directly into the street fund to help with our street improvements. And then already approved by the city council but included in this budget will be a 3% water rate increase and a 6% sewer rate increase. And this chart just shows how the city of Batavia compares for property tax rates. Of course, your property tax bill is comprised of many taxing entities, but this is the municipal portion collected by the city, and this is the city of Batavia right here, using the last two years of tax rates for comparison. And the city of Batavia has the lowest tax rate. And we're projecting with even the $300,000 increase that the rate will stay at 69 cents per $100 of EAV. And then the timeline, there will be a public hearing for SSA 57, which is the downtown SSA, because the tax increase will be a little bit higher this year. So there will be a public hearing for that. And then we'll also be asking for approval of the budget on December 5th, city council meeting. And then on December 19th, we'll ask for approval of the tax levies. And December 21st, those will be filed with the county along with our budget. And January 1 will be the start of our budget year. And then I don't know if there's any questions from the council before we open it up for public comment? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is a public hearing. Does anybody in the audience wish to make any comments to the council at this point? If you'd just give us your name for the record, please, so the clerk can...
Sylvia Kipple, 1420 Becker Avenue. First of all, I have some questions. I noticed that you said in the presentation that there would be, in talking about criticisms of the improvements proposed in downtown Batavia. You said no, I'm probably one of your chief critics, and you said that no, that the TIF money would be used to fund it. Where did that $600-plus thousand from the Speedway property come from? Was that TIF money? Was that TIF money?
Speedway's out at the corner of Wilson and Kirk.
Correct. But that is being used to purchase the Larson Becker property, is it not?
It has not yet been allocated for that purpose, so I would have to answer no at this time.
But that was mentioned as the intent of using that money for the purpose of the Larson Becker property when you had the, when you did that?
It definitely was mentioned in that presentation. Since then, there have been discussions to utilize it for other purposes as well. And so, at this point, it has not been allocated for that use.
Okay. How much money has been sent, or is planned to be spent at closing on the purchase of the properties, the demolition of those properties, and the cleanup of all those properties, and the building of the parking lot that's involved with the Shodin project and the adjacent Larson Becker property?
Again, I don't know the exact figures for those amounts, because those projects have not even been put out to bid. But the amount that is the purchase price for those properties is a matter of public record.
And where will that money come from to pay for those properties?
Those monies will come from the TIF.
Directly? We have that money in the TIF right now to pay for all those properties?
No, there will be a loan, either a bank loan or a loan from a general fund, but it will be repaid with TIF increment.
And how long will it be, take to pay those off with the TIF increment?
Probably four years. It'll be paid back with interest.
Is that from the Shodin project or from the other properties that are in the TIFs?
It will be from the other properties in the TIF, because this will be for the Larson Becker property, which is not part of the Shodin project.
And what about the Fisher &amp; Fryendall properties?
Those will be part of the TIF.
Okay, so those will be paid off from what, because they're in a new TIF?
Right now, they're in TIF 1, so the purchase will be from TIF 1.
And so, in TIF 1 will pay off, after even after it's moved into TIF 5, TIF 1 will still continue to pay off on those purchases?
Those will be paid for, yes. That's correct.
Okay. But the money is from the general fund for the time being?
It would be a loan, though. It would, the general fund would be made whole.
But right now, we have, we have the money in the general fund to pay for those, for those purchases.
Is, are you asking if the money's available?
The money is available.
Yes, the money is available.
But yet, we don't have the money to pay for the street improvements that we need.
Or this, the sewer improvements that we need, that we have to raise the taxes $300,000. Because we need $1 million per year for many years. So as opposed to it just being a one-time expenditure, it is an ongoing expense from year to year.
Okay. My comments are that the $300,000 in the property tax increase, I don't believe is fair, when you, while you're giving away the millions of dollars to Shodin. The properties connected to the Washington-Wilson project are being purchased, demolished, and cleaned up with general fund money. Property purchases alone related to the Shodin project, old and new purchases, amount to more than $3 million. That money could have been spent on the stormwater drainage repairs you are now requesting a tax increase for. The money the city got from the Speedway property alone, over $600,000 in money, not restricted to any TIF or conditions or loans, could go immediately to the repairs that the citizens need, instead of being used as some prop for a wealthy developer. I've always said if the money is genuinely needed for the general good, like sewer repairs, and if you have spent what you already have wisely, the citizens would gladly agree to pay more in taxes. But given this Shodin deal, there is no way you can argue you are spending our money wisely, and so I strongly, absolutely object to the tax and fee increases you have written into this budget. For the leaf and brush pickup, I object to the increase in leaf and brush fees and request that you separately price out the leaf from the brush. The brush pickup is merit, because there are really no alternatives for homeowners with large branches, other than buying, or neighbors pooling together to buy, and then having to store their own chippers. However, I believe brush pickup can be reduced in frequency, if that would help, to perhaps every other month, or spring and fall during prime pruning season, and following large storms with downed branches. As for the leaf pickup, there are many alternatives. There's mulching, which is good for the soil, there's composting, and there's bagging. If the leaf pickup is half the proposed residential cost, at three and a quarter a bag, that's nine 33-gallon bags full of leaves for the same cost to the homeowner, and the neighbors who mulch or compost wouldn't have to pay anything. If you create financial incentives through direct payment for stickers, not monthly costs hidden in our bills, you may find more people begin to mulch. An educated, an educational article in Neighbors Magazine on the benefits of mulching when leaf pickup is discontinued would be useful. Some may argue that leaf pickup is important and akin to sewers, and that everyone is expected to pay for sewer improvements, even though the sewer repairs in one neighborhood may only benefit those immediate residents. But leaves are not sewers. Maintaining sewers are an essential function of a municipality, a need that cannot be met by individuals, and at one time or another, all will benefit from. Leaves can be handled by individuals at low cost through mulching, composting, or bagging. There are choices homeowners can make to take care of the problems themselves. I ask that you separate leaf and brush collection and eliminate leaf collection, rather than increase our fees to $60 per year. For video gambling, I object to allowing video gambling as a new source of revenue. Just because a city can use something for a source of revenue doesn't mean it should. I'll use the public comments section later in the council meeting when video gambling is discussed to address the issue more fully. But as it pertains to the budget, taking advantage of a vice to fill holes in a budget should never be acceptable. If prostitution were legalized in Illinois, as it is in Nevada, at local discretion, would you take advantage of the opportunity to legalize prostitution to fill holes in your budget? You could, but should you? Finally, I don't like the way you've changed the presentation for this evening. The $300,000 property tax increase will cost homeowners more. Is it true, isn't it true that if you don't have, because you're saying the rate will stay the same, because the increase in EAV, wouldn't the rate drop lower if you didn't have that $300,000 increase? So we would be saving money off of our bills. And we would be saving it, and just because you're filling it up and making us pay the same as we did last year, doesn't mean we're not losing, because we would see a decrease in our, in our property taxes, would we not? So that is an increase to our taxes. So I would appreciate truth in presentation to say that we will end up paying for this. And that's all I have to say for this portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jessica McGrail, and I just want to thank you guys for all that you do, the council. And I think that people forget that you guys are our neighbors and that you pay the same taxes as we do. And I think the budget is fair, and what Batavia needs to continue to grow and modernize. And we need the drainage fix that, you know, the city needs to include that in the budget. So I believe that the budget is appropriate, and I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? Somebody want to make a motion then to adjourn the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second?
Moved by Brown, second by Alderman Stark to close the public hearing. Kirk, take a voice vote, or, no, put it on the record, call it.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Silvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Butterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing on the 2017 budget is approved. Thirteen yes, no, noes, one absent. Moving to item number nine then, which is a second public hearing, scheduled for 7:35, so we're within the legal limits of doing this. This is for the creation of a special service area number 60 to be located at the southwest corner of Randall Road and Main Street. And Mr. Buneen, would you present this, I guess?
Thank you. As we discussed at the Committee of the Whole, this is the public hearing that's required for special service area number 60 being proposed at the southwest corner of Randall and Main Street. This is proposed as a dormant special service area to pay for various improvements that are in that development, including parking lot improvements, signage, detention maintenance, and those types of things. Our intention is for this to be a dormant special service area. We do not have intentions to activate this unless we can't work out something with the property owners to reactivate their property owners association. So the levy that is intended for this would cover all the improvements, maintenance, but at this point, we are looking to have a zero levy for this special service area.
Okay. Do we have anybody in the public that wants to address the creation of the special service area number 60 on the southwest corner of Main Street and Randall Road? I would just offer up as an insight, just for everybody's understanding, every area along Randall Road, from south of Main Street up to Fabian Parkway, obviously has big parking lots and drainage and all these other good things. And the one thing that we want to make sure that everybody understands is that we have the understanding with each one of those property owners that the individual ownerships out there pay for all the restoring of all the parking lots and doing all the stuff that needs to be done, not at taxpayer expense. Those are a property owner's requirement to make sure the drainage is working, that the streetlights are working, that the parking lots are paved. And what we have going here is a situation on the southwest corner of Main and Randall, where the ownerships that are involved there have failed to take action as far as maintaining streets and roadways and whatever, and drainage. So as a result of it, we've had to step in and kind of urge people along, so we're going to use this as an enactment that if there is no action by these people, and hopefully this sends a message to everybody else along Randall Road, that if you don't want to pay for your public improvements, that your parking lots and your, your plantings and your landscape and all this other good stuff, that the city will form an SSA on you, and you'll be taxed for it. And so that's kind of the dormant thing, that we're using this as kind of a veil threat. But we feel we have to in this particular case, because we don't have anybody that wants to, seemingly wants to do anything. So I guess we have nobody that wants to address it, so Alderman Brown, you want to make another adjournment motion?
I move we adjourn the public hearing on this issue.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark, that we vote to adjourn the public hearing. Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Silvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Butterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the public hearing is approved. Thirteen yes, no, noes, one absent. The police chief just came over and informed me that we have a cellphone up here. What's your, we already found the owner.
That's good police work.
I don't think I've ever seen that happen. Okay, we got that taken care of. Okay, moving to item 10, matters for the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody tonight that wants to address something that's not on the agenda? All right. Moving then to item number 11, which is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday on November 26, 2016. Alderman, ATEC, would you present that, please?
Yes. Whereas the Batavia Main Street is a not-for-profit, community-based organization devoted to enhancing downtown Batavia's identity as the heart of the community through volunteer efforts to help create a vital downtown business atmosphere, embraces our history, preserves our natural environment, and promotes quality events to instill a sense of place in our community. And whereas the city of Batavia believes that small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the glue that holds communities together, and whereas the city of Batavia supports its local businesses that create jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our neighborhoods, and whereas public and private organizations across the country have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, and whereas residents of our community and communities across the country are being asked to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, in recognition of Small Business Saturday, do hereby proclaim, November 26, 2016, Small Business Saturday in the city of Batavia, Illinois. Signed, Mayor Jeffrey D. Shelkey. I move that we accept, accept the proclamation as read.
Second. Motion by Alderman ATEC, second by Alderman Butterman, for the approval of the proclamation. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Silvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Butterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, noes, one absent. We're honored to have Jamie Som, the Executive Director of Batavia Main Street. Jamie, if you'd come up, then I'll present you this.
This is over right now.
So I'll give you that.
Thank you.
Thank you for good effort. You want to make any comments about it?
Can I just flow in for my minute?
Sure.
Because it all kind of ties together. All right. So this is awesome. So thank you, guys, for partnering with us. I sent this over to Laura and to the mayor. I saw a couple other communities were doing this. And Main Street, last year, did a little bit of a Small Business Saturday push, and this year, we're partnering even more with the downtown businesses and the local businesses around Batavia, the local and independent businesses, promote people getting out on Saturday and shopping. Everybody knows Black Friday. Everybody knows Cyber Monday. And I know that Small Business Saturday is getting more and more popular, but we really want to thank you, guys, for embracing that our community has a great growing downtown retail group, downtown restaurants, downtown service businesses. So thank you for making that proclamation. That's amazing. To continue on with my Main Street minute, just flow right into it. So we have some special promotions that we're going to be doing for Small Business Saturday. So on Saturday, from 9 o'clock until 9:00 PM, or whenever the business is closed, we'll have these signs, we have some A-frame signs that we're going to pop up in a couple specific places around town. We have some big balloons, we have some good signage in the windows of the businesses. And then we also created, and I put it at all of your desks, and I'll have some on the doorway on the way out, but we created a shop local flyer that includes a lot of the downtown retailers, service industry, you know, including some of our salons, our yoga studios, some of our other fitness locations, as well as the restaurants. So it's called Eat, Drink, Buy, and Experience Local. We also promote like the Depot and Water Street Studios to get you, guys, to be creative with your Christmas shopping this year. You don't have to just go to Target, even though we have Target here in Batavia, so that's good for sales taxes. It's, you can also head to downtown Batavia and shop places like Fawn Gifts or The Tea Tree, new retailers in town. You can patronize Kay Hollis and Salvage Heart, places that have been around for a while. You can be creative and get a gift certificate to the creamery for kids in the family. You know, there's, there's a variety of different downtown businesses and local businesses for you to really think about for your Christmas list. So my goal this year is to purchase as many gifts for friends and family, which it is every year. It's not really a big surprise. But I'm going to try and fill up my Christmas list with as many local items as possible. So I encourage all of you, guys, around this table, and everybody in our community, to do that as well. Because again, those dollars that go into those small local businesses come back twofold to our community, so much more than those that go into the big boxes or on Amazon. And I know shopping on Amazon is so easy. But when you only have to drive five minutes into your downtown, that's pretty easy, too. So to continue on with downtown happenings, last weekend, we welcomed lots of shoppers for our holiday market, and we hosted that this year at the Congregational Church on Batavia Avenue. We had about 35 vendors, vintage and local artists and handmade artisans. Many of those vintage vendors are from shops around town. The artisans are all local. And we did something different to better include downtown retailers and local retailers in this event. We did a raffle. For every $25 that was spent at one individual vendor at the event, the shopper got a raffle ticket. We asked the downtown retailers to create a little vignette to display items that were in their shop, because people may not have been in there before. And we just in those numbers, so we didn't ask the vendors how much they made through the weekend, we're not going to invade all of that. But just then, the raffle tickets turned in, we had more than $8,000 spent during the holiday market. So that doesn't include the small purchases that were made at multiple vendors. That doesn't include that some of the vendors may have only given one $25 ticket for $400 worth of purchases, when they should have given multiple more. But it gave us a good idea of how many dollars were spent and given, you know, given back to those local retailers. We also had a good response from the downtown retailers and businesses, and how many people came in during that weekend. You know, so talking to Salvage Heart, I know they had a good Sunday, Saturday, I believe. Beatitudes, being right next to the Congregational Church, they had a really good turnout during their open shopping hours. They tried to stay parallel with the holiday market. Fawn Gifts had a good amount of people coming in and checking out their space, as well as Healing Arts. So it ties all in, people coming to the holiday market, maybe from town, maybe from out of town, but then continuing to shop throughout the downtown, going out for, you know, appetizers and drinks afterward as well. So we think that was a big success for us on all ends. Another way to shop local is by joining us at the weekly indoor market. I passed out a tiny little flyer for you, guys. We are hosting that from 9:00 AM until noon every Saturday at Gaetanos. If you've seen the big news on Facebook, Gaetanos Italian Market will become an official separate business sooner than later in the downtown, downstairs section of the restaurant, now that they are finishing up all the details with their new upstairs. So every week, we welcome vendors with fresh eggs, fresh breads, baked goods, local greens, meats, honey, pretty much everything on a smaller scale that you could get at the big outdoor market, but now inside. And then you venture downstairs, and Mr. Alan Wolfe's son is down there whipping up the latest creation, as well as fresh pastas and different kinds of Italian meats and whatnot. So if you haven't had a chance to go, you should. Another place to get good Christmas presents or snacks for Thanksgiving, whatever, you know, whatever it is, you're going to want to pop down there. I think they had something online that they're doing some crazy Italian bread on Wednesday. So get there, because you'll want that. We, a couple downtown events that are coming up. The Batavia Park District hosts their annual celebration of lights right here at Peg Bonn Center this Sunday, so from 4 until 7:00 PM. Bring your family down for the family tradition. The mayor and Santa Claus will light the big tree. There are free hayrides around Christmas Tree Lane. The firefighters always do their bake sale, which is awesome, and of course, Santa will be there to greet all the kids. We're going to have him three Saturdays, so the 3rd, the 10th, and the 17th, from 9:00 until noon. The first 100 kids that come, adults can come and take pictures with them, too. They did last year, so if you want to do that, that's okay. But the first 100 kids of each of the Saturdays will receive, I think we're partnering with Chick-fil-A and Funway, for gifts for the kids. So that's just another fun thing, trying to keep us active in the winter, get people to just be down here, because we don't want to see all of the awesome numbers of people that have been coming into downtown Batavia diminish during the winter months. In order to bring all of this programming, economic growth, and fun into downtown Batavia, we need support from our local sponsors and businesses. So our events are a great way to promote your business and show the community members that you support your favorite neighborhood and their favorite neighborhood downtown Batavia. Our new 2017 sponsorship program is ready and available. We've got it printed. It's in a big box in the office. So Kathy and I are ready to start meeting with business owners and get a role on all of that. We do have a lot of those sponsorships sold already. So I know some of you around this table own businesses, want to start marketing around town. Contact us, let us know, because we have a great variety of programming that'll get you in the hands of the community and then, in turn, help us increase the amount of events and programming that we can do in downtown. So if you're interested in sponsorship opportunities, or if there's people out there that want to get involved with volunteering, help us come up with new ideas, and just know what's going on in downtown, you can find out about that on our website at downtownbatavia.com. You can also call us at 630-761-3528. Make sure you like us on Facebook, and make sure you sign up for our e-news on our website when you're on there. And in the end, happy Thanksgiving, and don't forget to shop local. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. Thanks to you and to everybody at Main Street for your continued leadership in boasting our downtown. Okay, moving to item number 13 on the agenda, which is Ordinance 16-72, amending the land use map of the City of Batavia for 1600 West Wilson Street. Alderman Brown is Chairman of Community Development. Would you present this, please?
Sure, I'll take that, Your Honor. Both these ordinances, Ordinance 1672 and 1673, apply towards both the same piece of property. It is the 1600 West Wilson Street. It's the former site of where the West Side Water Tower was located and torn down like four or five years ago. It's currently zoned, I believe, it's currently zoned, Scott, what's it currently zoned?
R4.
R4.
R4. And what we have in front of us in these two ordinances, and the reason why we have these two ordinances in front of us is we put the property up for sale, and a developer came along and made an offer on it, and he wishes to build a 12-unit building on this piece of property. He requires 10 variances in order to do this, and the 1672 doesn't have anything to do with the variances or this property being approved, but it would need to be approved in order to build this property, or build this building on that piece of property. So we would need to entertain 1672 before we entertain 1673, as if 1673 were to pass, it couldn't pass unless 1672 did. So 1672 would approve an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use, putting the property into the land used designated more compatible with the existing zoning district of R4 multifamily residential, rarer than the existing public facilities and industrial designation, institutional designation. So I move for approval of Ordinance 1672.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of Ordinance 1672. Any discussion from the council?
Your Honor, I would probably need to mention that this did get recommended to the City Council with a positive recommendation.
With a positive?
Right, 1672 did.
So it's the next ordinance that we want to have further discussion, because I've had some people in the audience tell me that they may want to speak, so would that be the next one or this one?
That would be the next one. We'll need to hit one at a time, but we can have conversation on the both of them, Your Honor, at the same time, and then, when the conversation's done, we can then go to Ordinance 1672.
Or let's take a vote on this one, Dave, and if it doesn't pass, then we don't even have to do the next one.
No sense in having that?
Yeah, that's probably the best way to do it. Okay, we have a motion and second for the approval of Ordinance 1672. Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
No.
Rosato?
Yes.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
No.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
No.
So that is approved by a vote of nine yes, four no. So we will move then to item number 14, which is Ordinance 16-73, amending the official zoning map for a planned development overlay at 1600 West Wilson Street. Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, so this one is same piece of property. There are 10 variances that the petitioner is asking for. I'll read those 10 off. First one is modification from Table 2.2.04 for a minimum perimeter building setback corner east of the approximate 23.12 feet instead of the required 30 feet. Variance 2 is modification from Table 2.2.04 for a minimum perimeter building setback corner on the west of approximately 25.16 feet instead of the required 30 feet. Variance 3, modification from Table 2.2.04 for a minimum perimeter building setback at the rear of approximately 10.26 feet instead of the required 20 feet. Variance 4, modification from Table 2.2.04 for a minimum perimeter landscaping area of the rear of approximately 9.25 feet instead of the required 20 feet. Variance 5, modification from Table 2.2.04 for private open space for four ground floor units being provided, 24 square feet, rarer than the required 60 square feet. Variance 6, modification from Table 2.2.04 for common open space amenities, 600 square feet of playground. Item 7, modification from Table 2.2.04 for a minimum perimeter building setback front of approximately 21.53 feet instead of the required 30 feet. Variance 8 is relief from Table 2.2.04 for minimum net land area per unit of approximately 1,777 square feet instead of the required 2,333 square feet. Variance 9, rather, is relief from 4.207A to allow a driveway width of approximately 61 feet instead of 18. Variance 10, and other relief necessary from the zoning code to grant approval of the proposed site plans and general conformance with the plans indicated for review by the Plan Commission and subject to the following conditions of approval. A, driveways providing full access to interior units with provision of small landscape areas, subject to the city staff approval. B, replacement of removal, replacement of removed trees at Independence with the replacement of trees at 1 to 1. C, all trees to be of the required minimum sizing as required by the zoning code. D, public sidewalks other than along Spuyler Road to be five feet in width. E, approval of the final engineering plans by city staff. And F, approval of design review by the Batavia Plan Commission. This was discussed at the Plan Commission. Actually, they had two meetings on this, and at both meetings, the Plan Commission did not recommend approval. They actually, at the first one, asked staff and the petitioner to go back and work on something that could be more agreeable without so many variances. The petitioner came back pretty much with the same plan, and which is, as I mentioned, I think 12 units on this piece of property. So it came to the Committee of the Whole with a negative recommendation, and the Committee of the Whole had quite a lot of discussion on it. We heard from the residents on it. We also had a nice conversation with the developer. He's trying to do something very nice for the city. I understand that, and at least I think he is. But in my opinion, it's just way too much on that piece of property, and he's asking for way too many variances. It does not complement the neighborhood. In fact, I think it would take away from the neighborhood. As one of the variances is in here, it's be a 60-foot wide driveway instead of what is allowed of an 18-foot wide driveway, and that would be on, I think, both Independence and on the other street at the same time. You know, so you'd have an awful lot of asphalt and awful lot of cars and an awful lot of people in a very small space. So I am going to vote in the negative on this. I can't see that we could possibly allow this to happen. I hope that the developer maybe works with staff on something that would be, something that would fit better in the neighborhood, but the way it stands right now, I couldn't support this. So I will move for approval of Ordinance 16-73, and then after we get a second on it, we can take public comment.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of Ordinance 16-73. Anybody on the council want to make any comments about it? Alderman, start.
Initially, I felt that this was being shoehorned into the neighborhood, and I went and looked at the property, and based on the variances and walking off the variances, it's very close to the lot lines. And so while I encourage the developer to come back with another plan, I also won't be supporting this project going forward.
Alderman, O'Brien?
I think, I could be mistaken, but I think the purposes of variances is also to, you know, accommodate somebody looking to build a house or a building or a developer. But the variances, we have to limit how many variances we do approve. I mean, it's, why do we have ordinances? We just, like 10 variances, to me, is excessive. I just think we're putting too much onto a limited space. And so, again, I'm going to oppose this, and I do, I do really think hard about it, because I want to support people moving into our town and doing development in our town and bringing tax dollars to our town, but not at the expense of the neighborhood and the people who live presently there. So I'm probably, I know I will oppose this.
Anybody else in the council?
Do we have some folks in the audience that want to address this issue to the City Council before we vote? All right, before we call the vote, I just want to say that I'm in agreement with Alderman Brown on this, as far as I think it's a little bit too much density for the size of the piece of property. And the thing that I would be troubled about is, is that, you know, the decisions this council makes here are supposedly independent, individual ones, and nothing impacts another. But if we were to go ahead and approve this, I have a feeling that the first thing, not the first thing, but down the road, one of the things you're going to hear from some other people about some piece of land, someplace in town, is going to be, well, you granted this much density and gave these many variances to this piece of property, so I would like to have this done over here in my piece of property, whatever ward that may fall in. I think it's almost sending a very loud, you know, message of precedent here that I don't know if I think the City Council should be sending. And obviously, the way this place works, I don't vote on this, I'm sure, because the only time I vote is half of you go one way and the half go the other. So I'm just stating my position here, but I would not be, if I was voting, I wouldn't be voting for this, for that reason. Okay, we have a motion.
I guess, I feel I need to add. I voted in favor of it, and will continue to vote in favor of it. As it stands right now, we can build nine units on the property, and we're moving it up to 12 units, so that's three more units. And it's bordered by, three of its sides are bordered by commercial. So I see this as a very nice transition between residential and commercial, a good buffer, and I think it's a really difficult property, because it's surrounded by three roads. And I also think that there are other properties, other projects, where we've granted this many variances. So this is an unprecedented. I understand what everyone else is saying, but I think it's a great project, so.
I would speak in support of it, too, because I think that at the size of the units that are going in there, even though there are 12 of them, they're a small enough unit that they should stay low enough in price that they'll be more affordable for people. I think if we end up with nine on the property, you're going to end up with a little bit bigger unit, same-sized building with nine units in it, and higher prices. So that's my only fear, is we're going to get away from something that we desperately need in this town.
Mm-hmm. That, too.
Alderman Chancet, did you want to make?
I was just going to echo Lucy's remarks. This is definitely a transition property. It does have commercial. This would actually provide a great buffer. It's unfortunate that, while this might not be the project that does get approved, if I were a neighbor and I lived in this neighborhood, I would expect that a project similar to this would eventually be approved, because this will not be open space forever.
Anybody else?
Your Honor, just to be clear, though, my motion has been made for approval of Ordinance 16-73. So, as I mentioned, I will be voting no on this, and we've always been told by our legal staff here that we should always make a motion in the form of a positive motion. So that's why I'm making it in the form of a positive motion, but if you do not want to see this happen, you need to vote no, not yes, on this.
All right, we have a motion, second on the floor, for the approval of Ordinance 16-73, or 73. Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
No.
Rosato?
No.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chancet?
No.
Wolf?
Yes.
Salvati?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Callahan?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Botterman?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
No.
So that vote is three yes and 10 no, so more ordinances defeated.
Your Honor, can I make a comment on that?
Certainly.
For the residents that are here, because I think some of them want to maybe know what happens now. What this means is that this project, as it has been proposed, as it has gone through with the Plan Commission and the Committee of the Whole, is dead. It cannot happen. If that developer is even slightly remotely interested in trying to pursue anything further, he would have to start, as any developer would, he would have to start over from the very beginning. I believe we would even have to put the property back up for sale again. We would have to get it appraised, and we would have to go through the entire process from square one. So there's absolutely nothing on the books right now for that piece of property as far as development goes.
One thing to clarify, the contract does run through the end of the year, so in theory, if they wanted to start over again, they could do that, but, you know, we would have to grant an extension, because we don't have enough time to get Plan Commission and everything else. But I anticipate with a negative vote, they will probably withdraw the contract.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, it's over and done with. Moving to item number 16, which is approval of a waiver of bidding for purchase of a John Deere 4101 combination loader and backhoe.
You skipped 15.
15 first.
Oh, sorry. Okay, item 15, Ordinance 1669, establishing special service area number 60 for the Windmill Lakes Development of Southwest Corner of Main and Randall. That's the one we just had the public hearing on. Alderman Brown?
Yep, thank you, Your Honor. If we pass this tonight, that would set this, continue to set this in the motion from tonight. The property owners would have 60 days in order to object to this SSA. If 51% or more of the property owners did file a petition of objection, it would kill it. If they don't, then we have up until January 21st to record this ordinance, and then we would have it in place in case we cannot, as Mr. Buneen talked about, if we cannot get what the, or the mayor did, if we cannot get the property owners to start working on their property the way they're supposed to, then we could enact the SSA. But right now, it'd be passed with a zero tax levy. So I move for approval of Ordinance 16-69.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Rosato, for the approval of Ordinance 1669, establishing special service area number 60 for the Windmill Lakes Development, Southwest Corner of Main and Randall. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved by a vote of 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving now to 16. Approval waiver of formal bidding for the purchase of a John Deere 4101 combination loader and backhoe, amount of $140,700. Alderman Wolf, you have this under City Services?
This is the formality that we go through when we buy from this type of situation, where we have to waive formal bidding. This is for a backhoe that's shared between the Street Department and... This is for a backhoe that's shared between the street department and water department. Electric, everybody uses this for multiple activities. It is replacing a, I believe it's a fourteen-year-old backhoe that we have, and depending on whether we can sell it for more than what they'll give us for a trade-in before the other one comes in, we'll either sell it outright or trade the other one in. And this has to be an extremely reliable piece of equipment, because it gets used all the time. Water mains in the middle of the night, so this is when we want to definitely get done. So, I'll make the motion that we waive formal bidding for the purchase of a two thousand seventeen John Deere four-ten L combination loader backhoe.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alman O'Brien, to waive formal bidding on the purchase of the John Deere backhoe. Any discussion? Kurt, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Slobadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botteman?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chancet?
Motion to waive formal bidding is approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving then to seventeen, which is resolution sixteen dash thirty-eight dash R, authorizing the purchase of the two thousand seventeen John Deere forty-one oh-one combination loader and backhoe. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you again, your honor. I wanted to make a note here during the proposal tonight to let everybody know that, you know, I think this goes to our staff that we have. They got additional customer loyalty discounts, and they're actually getting the price on this lower than the GSA or the other purchasing co-ops that we participate in. So, they're actually doing, I think, better with their money in the department right now than, you know, the other opportunities that are out there. So, I want to say that this is really, I think, a good cost-effective deal that we've got going on this one. Other than that, I'll make the motion that we approve resolution sixteen dash thirty-eight dash R, authorizing the purchase of a two thousand seventeen John Deere four-ten L combination loader backhoe for the amount of one hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of the purchase of the backhoe, John Deere forty-one oh-one, in amount of a hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred dollars. Any discussion? Kurt, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Slobadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botteman?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Resolution thirteen dash, excuse me, sixteen dash thirty-eight dash R is approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving to eighteen, which is ordinance sixteen dash seventy, revising Title III and Title V of the Batavia Municipal Code, authorizing video gaming. And the city administrator wants to make some comments?
Yes, so this matter initially came to us back in September. It was a member of our business community asked city council if they would be willing to reconsider their prior position of prohibiting video gaming in our community. And so, we put it on a future COW agenda. On October fourth, the Committee of the Whole then discussed the matter of whether the city should reconsider the prohibition of video gaming. And we heard from several members of the public and staff, including Chief Shira, who had provided us with a memo indicating that his survey of other municipalities that had decided to allow video gaming had seen no uptick in crime or in service calls as a result of implementing video gaming in their municipalities. So, we were asked at the end of that Committee of the Whole meeting to then draft an ordinance. And our ordinance was based on the Illinois Video Gaming Act, and so it contains many of the same guidelines and preventive measures that are included in that statute. We plan to assess a fee of twenty-five dollars per terminal and allow only five terminals per establishment. Video gaming terminals may be operated only by persons over the age of twenty-one, and if it's an establishment that allows patrons younger than the age of twenty-one, then those gaming machines must be in a cordoned-off area and supervised to allow only those twenty-one and over to operate those games. Applications are filed with the chief of police, and our mayor, the local liquor commissioner, is the one who has the authority to award a license, suspend, revoke, and/or fine a licensee of a maximum of five hundred dollars for violating the ordinance. So, although the city itself would receive some revenue as a result of allowing video gaming, actually, we would receive five percent of the net revenues from those machines. We expect that the revenue that the city receives is quite nominal, but the business community is really driving our recommendation for adopting video gaming. While they say it's not going to be a game changer for any of their businesses, it allows them the opportunity to earn a little extra revenues that they say helps keep the lights on. It helps pay the utilities. And the individual who first came forward is one of the businesses who would be on the boundary of the development project that was going on. And he mentioned that it might be something that the city wants to reconsider, because it would help with the impact that he foresees that that development project would have on his business. And so, at the Committee of the Whole meeting last Tuesday, we presented the proposed ordinance, and we also took a look at some of the other restrictions that St. Charles had put in place. And one of those was that the ordinance there requires that an establishment have their liquor license for a period of one year before they're allowed to apply for a video gaming license in the city of St. Charles, and seemed to be agreed upon that that would be a good restriction to incorporate in our own. So, the ordinance that you have before you today has been amended to include that requirement, that the establishment have their liquor license for at least one year. And that's all that I had to present, unless you have any questions for me or for Chief Shira.
Yes, I do.
Alman Botteman?
At last week's discussion, I think we were referring it to the city attorney for a review on the idea of what happens with the assets at a point of sale of the property. Was there a response from Kevin on that?
Thank you very much for reminding me. The ordinance has also been amended to include the provision that a successor in interest to that business can transfer, can apply for the video gaming license as long as the prior owner had qualified for that video gaming license.
So, there would be no delay?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
No delay.
Other comments from the council on this one?
I do.
Slobadi?
I have, since this came up within the last week and a half, two weeks, I appreciate the business, the business community driving this for incremental revenue. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's the way it should go. I have heard from many residents in regards to this since our COW meeting, and I have not heard from one that was positive about it. And so, while I own a business here in town, and while I appreciate the want and need to increase revenue and to expand into vertical markets that might increase your revenues, that doesn't necessarily mean it's the right thing, given the fact that the clientele are the citizens of Batavia. My inclination is to vote no, just given what I've heard, all the feedback that I have gotten, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman O'Brien?
We've gone through this, this is probably our third time voting on this, and the two prior times, I was, I voted in the affirmative. I've heard from a large number of residents, especially First Ward residents, and to Scott's point, they're all opposed to it. So, I just started looking for information and read a report from a professor at Illinois, University of Illinois, a report from a professor from Stanford, from a friend of mine at Boston College, and then there was a report sent to me from CNN, and just, everything I seem to be reading seems to be opposed to video gambling. And so, and I do want to support our businesses in town, I say that all the time, but I'm going to go against, I've been fighting through this myself, because I do want to support the businesses, but I, kind of echoing what Scott just said, I'm going to be opposed, and I'll vote in the negative on this.
Alderman Chancet?
I originally, when we talked about this, did not support this, but I felt like a bit of a hypocrite. I play blackjack, I think I'm pretty good at it. But I have to drive to Elgin, I have to drive to Aurora in order to play. And when I think about all the issues that surrounds this, I can't support this still. I wrote some remarks that I would actually just rather read, so I make sure I get everything out. I feel like a bit of a failure, because I think my junior high speech com teacher's in the audience tonight. Gaming does not bring in enough money to justify the risks, but it does have unquestionable potential to do serious damage to those who cannot afford to lose their money to a machine. Make no mistake, this is a backdoor tax on the poor and on the mentally ill, if you'll agree that addiction is a mental illness. As a banking professional, I can tell you stories of dozens of my customers who, over the last decade, their lives were ruined by gambling. Domestic abuse, bankruptcy, divorce, and suicide were some of their outcomes. Now, granted, that doesn't necessarily mean additional police calls, but these incidents do happen sometimes behind closed doors. I recognize that people are free to gamble in our state, but placing these machines in our local eateries and bars makes this form of entertainment way more accessible than it does need to be. So, if someone wants to gamble, they should do what I do. They should drive to a place where you go and gamble, not at a place where you would traditionally eat, drink, or socialize with your friends in our downtown. I, too, have received dozens of phone calls and emails asking me to vote, as I have in the past, which has been to keep this ban in place. I have received zero phone calls from residents asking us to lift the ban. The only ones asking us to lift it are the ones who would benefit from it, both personally and financially for their businesses. While I do want Batavia businesses to succeed, I do believe that our bar owners, that if our bar owners cannot keep their doors open by assembling a friendly and charismatic staff, by pouring strong drinks and offering delicious food, then these owners do need to do some soul searching, look closely at their overall viability of their business. No material issues have changed since our last ordinance, so therefore, I cannot support this ordinance. Thank you.
Alderman Atech?
I've supported it the past few times that it's come before us, and I will support it again. For me, I don't see it as that much different than granting a liquor license or selling tobacco to kids that are under twenty-one. You know, at some point, we're dealing with adults, and I don't see it's my position to regulate what adults want to do in our society, especially since our state permits it, allows it to be here. So, I don't feel, I'm not taking a side on whether I think it's right or wrong, I just don't think it's my place to decide.
Alderman Brown?
I agree with Alderman Atech, and, you know, there's a lot of, we've had the discussion at the committee, but, you know, there's, you can buy a lottery ticket at just about every gas station and 7-Eleven there is, and that's, in my opinion, a form of gambling. Pouring a stiffer drink, you know, some people say we shouldn't be drinking, too, and we're recommending pouring a stiffer drink, so you can get people to come to your restaurant. You know, the VFW has asked us to reconsider this a couple of times. They're very surprised that we didn't pass it the last time. You know, you've got the Moose Lodge right down here, which everybody thinks is in Batavia, but it's actually in the county, and they have found that it has been a tremendous help for them, that it has provided them some of the income that they needed, so that they could do some improvements to their property and their building that they weren't able to do otherwise, and they're looking forward to being able to do some more. We had an example from a restaurant owner here at the Committee of the Whole that talked about some of the unexpected expenses that they run into. We all run into those, and they're looking for, they're looking for their best interest, I agree, and their personal best interest. But, you know, the VFW is certainly a great entity they have in this town. They certainly support our vets, and they're struggling. They see this as a way that they can pay, as our administrator said, a way that they can pay our increasing fees and taxes and what have you. And I look at it as the one business owner that brought it to our attention. You know, he's looking at a possible development coming that could possibly affect him dramatically financially, and he's worried about being able to stay in business. He's worried about being able to pay his utility bills. So, these kinds of funds, this kind of income is, it's not huge. We're not using it for our budget. I think someone earlier in the budget process mentioned that it's in our budget, it's not in the budget. We're not planning on this money. This is something that we haven't earmarked, we don't have it in our hands, and I don't know what we'll do with it, but that'll be for the council in the future to decide if it does pass. But I think that we need to provide the opportunity for the VFW and the businesses that are in town that see this as a need to be able to be competitive with the neighboring cities that do offer this, to be able to stay in existence.
Alman Callahan?
I understand exactly where you're coming from with liquor and tobacco and all of those other things that are legal by the state. The part that makes this different is the state left this decision to each community to decide. So, I do agree that it is for us to determine, otherwise, the state should have exercised their right when they passed the law and said, it's legal in the state, it is legal everywhere. They did not do that. They punted to us, because they said, you need to decide for your communities. So, I disagree that it's not our place. It's specifically our place, otherwise, the state would have made it that way. That being the case, you can make pros and cons for each of the arguments. Each side has a valid point to it, and that's where, when you get down to not trying to demonize a side, or one side, or the other, it goes down to, what does the community want? And this one is one of those ones that it doesn't matter my opinion on it. I heard from residents that I represent that said, no, we don't want it in our town. And that was the way the state wrote it for that reason, so I go with what my residents are telling me. No.
Okay, anybody else? Alman McFadden?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts. First and foremost, like others, I've heard from many people, and the responses have been overwhelmingly, I don't want this in town, we don't need it. The people that, the only people I have heard from are the business owners, and I, like others, I'm very sympathetic to their needs and their desire to find additional ways to grow their business. My issue with video gaming is the way it's set up. It's set up to suck most of the money out of our town. There's only a finite number of entertainment dollars to go around, and a good chunk of it goes to the gaming operator, you know, thirty-five percent to the terminal operators, thirty percent down to the state. And so, while it's good for the small subset of businesses in town that are able to have video gaming if they wanted to it under the state statute, there's a whole host of other businesses in town that this is not an option for. And I feel like with the limited number of dollars to circulate, we're pulling money out that could be spent at other businesses, as Jamie was here and gave a nice plea about Shop Local, places like the Tea Tree and all these other new businesses that are opening up in town. And I feel like I don't want to pick favorites and support one set over all of them. I want to do my best to support everybody in town, so I can't support this either.
Anybody else want to speak? Well, I'll go, I'll give the
Well, I'll go, I'll give the same speech I gave at the committee meeting. If, I, obviously, as I sit here, I'm not probably going to be voting on this, but I'll throw my two cents on the table, and that's, I have said at the committee meeting, I, if I was to vote, I wouldn't be voting in favor of this. I shared the memory that I have of what happened right after the boats opened in Elgin and Aurora. We had two businesses in Batavia that basically went out of business because the owners decided to take the till from the night's receipts and take it to the boats, and they did that enough times that they basically lost the businesses. And then subsequent to that, we've had, I'm, you know, I'm not starting to start naming names here, but we, we had some families break up over excessive gambling. So it hasn't been a real good experience, in my view, here for Batavia to have it. So I'm not, I wouldn't be voting if I was voting tonight, and I don't think I'm going to, because first of all, we got an odd number on the council, so this can't be a seven to seven vote here tonight, but I would not be supporting it. So do we have some folks in the audience that want to address this? Can you give us your name, please, for the clerk?
Sure. Thank you. My name is Lidl Kraszewski, and I live at 911 Hanson Street. And I want to say that I think I was in contact with some of you and in conversation with you and in email communication. I want to say thank you for making serious consideration. I've heard the conversation tonight, and I can tell that you have been seriously considering a serious situation. So I, I want to say first, I appreciate that. Can I answer a couple of things that I heard, ma'am administrator? Helping keep the lights on. My first question and pushback would be, at whose expense would that be? And as a resident of the city of Batavia, I love this city, I love the people in it, I love all the people in it. And I feel like we all have a responsibility too, if we're, if we're a business owner. To the gentleman who made the remark here, our responsibility is to run a business as legally and as best as we can to serve customers. And it shouldn't be the resident's responsibility to help keep the lights on, in my opinion. One more pushback for the chief, if I can. I'd love to talk with you about information in regard to an increase in crime. Opening the door to gambling, I believe, keeps the door open. And some of the research that I did, which was easy to find, definitely showed an increase in crime over time. And so, yes, maybe calling a neighboring community to find out if there's been an instance might be a direct shot at one certain place, but I think there's more information to be had over it. My challenge would be to get that information. Could I read a little bit of statistics that I found? Because I think you're interested in statistics. And then when I'm done, I'll share my heart. In a CNN report, when New Jersey allowed casinos, and when I say casinos, consider that to video gambling, because I'm going to go to video gambling, that actually, experts contend that it's even more dangerous. When New Jersey allowed casinos in Atlantic City back in 1977, casino advocates promised that gambling would revive the town's fading economy. The casinos did create jobs as promised, but merchants who expected foot traffic to return to the city's main street, Atlantic Avenue, were sorely disappointed. The money that comes to the casinos stays in the casinos. The liquor stores and cash for gold outlets now line the cities once premier retail stripped. In other words, business did not prosper. What happened was money was funneled into one or two gambling casinos. Businesses suffered. The impact of gambling on local property values is unambiguously, unambiguously negative, according to the National Association of Realtors. Gambling does not revive local economies, it actually hurts economies in, when it comes to foreclosures in homes. The Institute for American Values is sometimes described as a socially conservative group, but this is important to consider. The president, David Blankenhorn, has publicly endorsed same-sex marriage. Its board of directors is chaired by Bill Gouston, who is a policy advisor to Bill Clinton. So it has a group of people from both sides, conservative and liberal, and the entire organization is worried about gambling. It aggravates income inequality by their negative impact on family stability. This is not just a conservative or church issue, it is a national issue on equality for all people. The IAV also reports in a Canadian study, it found that 75% of casino gambling customers who play only occasionally, and this is important, they provide only 4% of the casino revenues. It's the problem gambler who keeps the casino in business. That means 96% of the revenue comes from 25% of its customers, the problem gambler. Big point I want to make is modern gaming, video gaming, are highly addictive, according to the study, because they get into people's heads as well as their wallets. They engineer the psychological experience of being in a zone, a trance-like state that numbs feeling and blocks out time. For some heavy players, the goal is not winning money, it's staying in the zone. It's an intensely desirable state. Players prolong their time on the machine until they run out of money. They actually call this playing to extinction. This is an addiction. My question is, are we okay with this? Are we content to allow the growth of an industry that consciously exploits the predictable weakness of the most vulnerable people? Now, if I can share my heart. I am a local pastor also of a church called Christ Community Church. We're a church with four campuses, and we love to get behind families, and we love to invest in them. We believe in healthy families. I've invested my life in other younger, less fortunate people. And we love living on the east side of Batavia. And I'd like to tell you about David. When he was 10 years old, his dad was incarcerated because he had drug, alcohol, and gambling issues. And David's dad spent most of his life in prison. And I became David's friend, and I became his role model. I didn't know I was until he told me one day that I was. And David has overcome because he made healthy decisions, because he was in an environment and a community that was for him, that helped him, that walked with him, that gave him good opportunities and great choices. It's not an easy decision to choose not to gamble. David's sister lives in the Section 8 projects on Wilson Street. She walks to work here every day. She works in downtown Batavia. And she's overcoming a past that she didn't deserve. And I'm going to help her. David is married. David works full-time. David is a gifted musician and artist, and he writes songs now. And he is making a difference because he's learned how. But David happened, had an opportunity to make good choices. I contend that those folks that are less fortunate, those are the best customers to video gaming, and we have a responsibility to them. Thanks for hearing me.
Good evening, Mayor Schelke and councilmen. My name is Lois Dahlstrom, and I reside at 419 South Forest Avenue. Last week, I appealed to you to take a stand against lifting the ban on video gambling in our city. Once again, I make that same plea. Batavia is a town that is rich in history and family friendliness. It would be a shame to see what the influence of video gambling would do to it. More and more people would be hurt as attendables of the industry reach out to destroy families and businesses. Video gambling is not an innocent pastime, but it's a very addictive form of taking risks that can elevate quickly, causing the destruction of lives in its path. It has been called the crack cocaine of gambling. Some of you seem to be blind to the truth that the city would not benefit from the 5% tax revenue that it would gain, but it would actually cost three times that amount to cover the costs in social services. Video gambling is not an innocent way for people to spend their recreational budget. It devours the weakest and the most vulnerable among us, children, the poor, and senior citizens. Seniors, by the way, are the fastest growing number of addicts to gambling. The statistics for the month of October from the Illinois Gaming Board have just been released this past week since I last talked to you. There are already 24,574 machines in operation throughout the state and over 5,700 places. Over $1.2 billion was played last month here in Illinois. 35% goes to the terminal operators, 25% to the state. 35% goes to the local establishments, and only 5% goes to our local government. This makes no sense as a revenue resource for our city. It won't begin to pay the cost of the community as a whole. When the crime increases, bankruptcies become more frequent. The financial and social costs make it a danger to our citizens. One of the arguments that was made last week was that the new ordinance would have an establishment required to hold a liquor license for a year before allowing them to have gambling terminals, gambling terminals. There are at least, get this, 51 liquor licenses in the city, and many, many more to come if this gets passed. Around the state, laundromats, flower shops, beauty shops, gas stations, children's amusement centers, grocery stores, theaters, gas stations, they all have lined up to request and have gotten liquor licenses so that they can have machines. This could happen in our town. This could happen in Batavia. Another argument that was given last week concerning the lifting of the ban was that the people are going to gamble anyway, and Batavia's businesses are losing out on income. Well, accessibility isn't good. Why not have the businesses improve their products or services instead? Give the people a reason to stay local because what is offered here? Besides that, some people, including myself and my husband and many of these people gathered here, would take offense to having a, to patronize a place that offers video gambling. Signage was another issue that was brought up last week, or signage is the placing of signs advertising the availability of video gambling with, was part of the discussion with the council. Such advertising makes a business appear shoddy and not family-friendly. Some establishments get around the restriction by placing the video gaming machines near doorways where they are visible from the street. Is that what you want your children and your grandchildren to see as they drive down Wilson Street, Batavia Avenue and Randall Road? I don't think so. I don't want my grandchildren to see that. Right now, there are over 30 communities, and I have a list of them that you could look at, of seeing places and communities that are trying to rein in their ordinances that they've allowed for video gambling in their communities. And they're trying to place restrictions on those businesses. Locally, Algonquin was just mentioned in the Daily Herald last Friday as a community that is tightening their restrictions to keep establishments from operating for the sole purpose of gambling. Think about it this way. If you had a tiger in a cage and then let it out for just a short while, how successful would you be in getting that wild animal back in the cage? You probably couldn't. And in the meantime, you could get yourself and your community hurt. Video gambling is that tiger in our community. We must keep it in its cage by not lifting the ban. Please vote yes to retaining the ban and continue to make Batavia a place where we can be proud of to call our home. Thank you.
Anybody else? Reverend?
I'm Michael Rusici. I abide at 346 North Van Nordwick in Batavia, and I speak in the name of the Batavia Ministerial Association. And the clergy from seven congregations in town have expressed their concern about the overturning of the ban on video gambling for the reasons that we have just heard from the previous speakers. But again, because it is a very addictive form of gambling, we would be against increasing the availability of it. According to some of the statistics, at least in southern Illinois, places that have had video gambling for a while have experienced a greater incidence of robberies. And there's also the question of the reputation of the community, that in a number of places, people have said that they don't want themselves to be considered a little Las Vegas, for whatever you would like to interpret that as, but there were several mayors who have gone on record about that. So because of the, the human cost, the reputation of the community, and how we like to present ourselves as the Batavia community, as a family-friendly place, and because of the, the possibilities of, of a negative impact overall for what the several aldermen have said and, and as the previous speakers, that the Batavia Ministerial Association would like to maintain the ban on video gambling. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Jim Nichols with Cross Town Pub here in Batavia, 1890 Mill Street. Two years ago, we came to this city. I myself am local. I have a family in St. Charles, five kids. Family is very important to me, as well as being a small business owner. Coming to this community, you know, I wasn't involved in the last two decisions at all. And, you know, I figured at that point in time, I was kind of busy working my business, wanting to have a product that the community would, would love to have in this community. So I respect what the community is saying, and many of the councilmen here, for the pros and the cons on both sides of the fence. Certainly respect the moral standpoint from it. My viewpoint is, is one, this is not going to save my business. I mean, I, I certainly hope that my business never gets to a point where it needs that kind of saving. Certainly though, in terms of what it can do from a small business perspective, are those isolated things that do happen? Those repairs that I mentioned when I spoke last week, in terms of a pipe busting that's going to cost $5,000 to $7,000. That puts a dent in the budget. For us, every year, as a business, we've always budgeted for all kinds of charitable events, sponsorships, and those include Snowflake Run, those includes St. Baldur's, those include a number of schools in which we give back in terms of our revenue, a 10% out of our own revenue to a lot of these charities. Not to mention the money that it costs for us to sponsor Batavia Bulldogs, because we are a sports, restaurant, bar establishment, so we definitely support local prep schools. All of those do cost, and in terms of that cost, it comes directly from our revenue. It does help a small business, and again, we're talking about a handful of businesses that would probably even qualify or even desire this type of license. But it would definitely help in terms of what more we could do for the community. In two years, we've raised over $100,000 on my ledger for local charities, the local school districts, and several different organizations in terms of what we've been able to generate in two years of being a business here in Batavia. So it is important. It is important to, to us as a business. Personally, I can tell you, St. Charles passing a gambling ordinance, video gaming, I mean, it hasn't broken up my family. I understand there's a lot of horror stories out there in terms of gambling, from a family perspective, from a business perspective. There's a lot of horror stories in terms of alcohol, the sale of that, or tobacco and the sale of that. You can go anywhere now and get a lottery ticket. Again, you're going to hear a lot of horror stories just about, about everything that can be sold. The obesity in America, that problem, you could certainly talk about that, and you could have horror stories with that. So while I don't want you to be blinded to... So while I don't want you to be blinded to several, several, you know, horror stories, I also want you to see something from a small business owner and where it would benefit us, and it would help us get back to the community as well. Thank you.
My name's Larry Stratton. My wife and I live at 525 Iroquois Drive in Batavia, and we've been really delighted to be Batavia residents for 30 years. We moved to Batavia because of the coolness of the city and the culture in the city, and we've loved it for 30 years, raised our kids here. And I just want to say thank you, Your Honor, to you and the rest of the city council for the things that you are doing to make Batavia really a better community. We truly appreciate that. And I would repeat as well, thank you for deliberating this so seriously. And I just have to say, I'm heartened tonight to hear one thing, and that is that you're listening to the residents of Batavia, because I do believe this is a decision for our town to make. And overwhelmingly, the people that I've interacted with or heard talk about this are grossly in favor of keeping the ban, and I would very much urge you to do that. I too am a pastor in the area, and when you see people in your office that are, as I do, as others do, and I'm sure many social service organizations, families that have been ripped apart for addiction, this being one of those kinds of things, and it starts small. And I would just ask the question, because there are other things that people can be addicted to, does that mean that we have to add yet one more thing, that someone can easily walk into a place that's just down the street from them and be lured into something else that is, as we've already heard, and I won't repeat that, highly, highly addicted and addictive, and it is designed to be that way? Also, what I've heard is, this will benefit a few, and it won't make a huge difference. So why, if that's the case, why would we go against what the overwhelming residents of our great city want and say, yeah, let's add this, when we don't really need to? As a taxpayer, frankly, my wife and I would be glad to pay a little higher taxes to continue to live in a town like Batavia that's got the culture that we signed up for when we moved here, and the continued improvements that we see happening. Love that stuff, because we want to live in a city that's a great place to live, and thank you for this deliberation consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Jim Gongawar. My wife and I reside at 744 Thorson Lane. Been residents here for 24 years. Know it's getting late, I'll keep it short. I just want to go on record that we are strongly opposed to the lifting of this ban. For all the reasons that have been stated before us, I don't think we need to reiterate those, but just want to go on record as just another citizen who's opposed to lifting this ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I promise I will be quick. Dale Richard, 1118 Larkspur, Batavia, Illinois. I've also been a resident of Batavia since 1990, '91. I've raised two children here, a great, great town. One thing I would like to address here is the misconception that the entire city of Batavia is against video gambling. That is not true. And a couple of the aldermen here that are against it, I'd like you to consider this: Would you publicly come up here or sit on that board and be knowing that you're going to be vilified? And I think that is the reason why the silent majority of the city of Batavia is not here, because people come up to me all the time, and they say, "I can't believe the city of Batavia will not allow Batavia VFW to have video gambling." And the reason is, they're scared of you. They don't want to be vilified, so they take the easy way out, and they just don't come here. They don't say anything. Why would they? Majority of them aren't even going to use the video gambling, but they're not against it. This is an ordinance of choice. The business owner has a choice to have video gambling and lose the business of some people. If he makes that choice, that is his choice. I have the choice to stay here in Batavia and video gamble. I don't video gamble. I gamble, but video gambling to me is just boring as sin. I can't do it. But I do know residents and friends of mine that leave this town, and they go elsewhere to do a little video gambling and participate in a meal at that establishment. So it's no, we're not losing, we're not stopping people from gambling, we're just pushing them a half a mile, block down the road. And 12 units, which I estimate would probably be the maximum you've ever seen in this town, because you've got to remember the other thing, we are reaching a saturation point. You said 25,000 video gambling machines, somebody mentioned? We're pretty close to saturation. I've seen in locations now where people get a video gambling license, they put in five, they take out two a couple months later, because remember, the provider has put together a lot of money to put those in. So it's not just going to be the fact of, "I want a license," it's going to be a fact of, are you going to get a business partner willing to put in hundreds of thousands of dollars into your business, does he feel he's going to get it back? In a lot of instances, you're not. It's saturation point. You're going to have to have an establishment that you have patrons that want video gambling. Otherwise, you're going to go someplace else, right? I promise I'd make it short. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my wife Sandy Shumblebeck, I'm Jeff Shumblebeck. I've been in Batavia since 1963, back before Batavia is what it is, when all that was farmland and this was still a factory. I'd just like to go on record that, do we really need video gambling? I mean, it's, I won't go over all the statistics and stuff. It's such a small thing, and you're opening a door. Once the door is open, how many other people have, with the statistics that have been given, that they've been trying to slow it down and to put more restrictions on it? Why even worry about that? Do we really even need it? We've got a nice community here. You guys have done a wonderful job with the downtown and everything else. My wife and I lived 518 West Wilson for 22 years, built a house out in Windermere, and we've been there for 12 years. It's, we've raised 13, 12 children. We've got 20, 23 grandchildren. And is this the legacy we want to give to our kids? I mean...
We're proud of Batavia. We love Batavia.
Of all the people that have come up to talk, and from the few aldermen that have said that they've gotten calls from their, from the people, how many were against it and how many were for it? As representatives of the people, I think that's one thing that needs to be taken into consideration. Since we can't have everybody vote on the issue, it's apparent to me from the few statistics I've heard and sitting here listening, that the majority of the people are against it in Batavia.
I do want to add one thing. We adopted eight children, and so our children that we adopted came from situations that were already compromised and dysfunctional. They were foster children, and we actually had 35 children that came and went out of our house that we didn't get to keep. But we watched these children struggle with different addiction-type situations that came from their forefathers, and it's really a very, 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 very serious situation. And, you know, I know someone mentioned that we already legalized alcohol and various other things, and I think Mr. Stratton said that, or someone said, that just because we legalize something that might be addictive-type situation, we shouldn't already open up the door to something else just because we've already got that legalized or in our community. So I do appreciate everybody taking this very seriously, and I would personally vote no. And we have, in our household right now, we have six, five or six adults and two children, three children, living in our household, and all of them would say no also. So I don't know if you take that into consideration, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Andrew Frankie, 701 Viking Drive, Batavia, Illinois. I have a family member who had a gambling problem. He lost everything his family had. He had an alcohol problem. He left home, came back right before his daughter, his son, was going to be born, and he died a few weeks later. That was my grandfather. I never knew him, I never met him. He had his gambling problem before the lottery was legalized in this state that was going to bail out the school district, before we had scratch-offs, before we had riverboats, any of that. George made up his own mind and his own decision, and legislation did not prevent that from happening. You can't legislate good behavior or bad behavior. We already have gambling on Butterfield Road, video gambling. We've got riverboats to the north of us, we've got riverboats to the south of us. This committee claims to be business-friendly. We've got Small Business Saturday coming up here, yet you've levied a 2% tax on everybody in this town that sells alcohol. You refuse to permit video gaming. I've lived here for 13 years now. The only restaurant that I know that hasn't changed hands is McDonald's. Think about that. I've never seen restaurants in a town change hands so many times. I don't think this town is video, or business-friendly. I really don't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sylvia Keppel, 1420 Becker Avenue. The other speakers, and even many of you on the council here who have concerns about allowing video gambling, were much more eloquent than I, so I will just add in my voice to ask you to please not legalize video gambling. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Nancy Gongawar, 744 Thorson Lane. Since there are people coming up from the audience saying that they would like you to lift this ban, I'd just like to go on record saying I'd like you not to lift this ban. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Steve Burkter from 10 Woodland Hills Road in Batavia. And I sat back there thinking, there are pretty eloquent people saying, "Let's not have this happen, let's not have this happen." And then there are others saying, "Well, maybe we shouldn't." And I thought, if I don't say something, I'll probably blame myself for not having done something, so I have to say something. And that is, I think you should not have video gambling in Batavia. I really think it's a bad idea. I mean, about two years ago, in the city of Batavia, you guys said, "Let's not do this," and the reasons that were put forth made a lot of sense. And they voted down the gambling idea. As a family-oriented city, it made sense to say no. Gambling, by the way, has now been called gaming, which is kind of intriguing to me because I don't see it as a fun-type game, and maybe some people do, but I don't. There are also other reasons to say no. According to studies, gambling is hardest on the least fortunate people. It's been pointed out to you before. It's like an extra tax on them, and that's not a good thing. Other places have passed this kind of ordinance, it's already been said. There are some places I've noticed recently as I've been driving around, where you drive by a storefront, it's so-and-so's video gambling place, and it's like, I bet the town didn't really plan on that to begin with. As I understand laws, generally, they fall into two kinds of categories: laws designed to prevent nuisances, or laws that are for the common good, not just one little segment of it, but the common good. I asked the city council members, how do they view this proposed ordinance? It doesn't seem to me to be for the common good. I also want to say before I go sit down, as we're coming close to Thanksgiving, thank you to all of you for all you do. I know that this is a difficult job and something that requires a lot of thought, and it showed that you've been thinking a lot about this, and I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of myself, my wife, and the city of Batavia people.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barbara Singer. I'm at 1171 Lexington Lane in Batavia, and my husband Ken and I would like to ask you to maintain the ban on gambling in our precious town that we love so much. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Did we have a motion made? No.
Good evening. I'm Julie Del Real at 321 North Van Buren Street. I've appreciated hearing everyone's opinions, and I'm thankful that you've received our emails. I'm one that has sent emails and have spoken to those who've responded, and I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate your service to our town. And I've also appreciated hearing what everyone else has said as well. And I agree with those who are asking you to maintain the ban on video gambling. As a mother, a stay-at-home mom, and someone who values our neighborhoods, our communities, our families, I see video gambling as some, a way to compromise all of that. It would compromise our schools, it would compromise our communities, it would compromise our leadership, and that's a lot of what attracts folks to come into Batavia. We don't want to live in these other Fox Valley areas who do allow video gaming. The one in St. Charles, they've only had it for a year. It's very hard to know the impact statistically in a year. But those who are a little further away, Elgin, Aurora, those are places we don't want to live, and partly because of the gambling that is allowed there. I've also observed and curious about even the little motto that's up on the screen. The budget's not just a collection of numbers, but an expression of values and aspirations. And so I was wondering, what expression of value will the vote be tonight? I see video gambling as a system set up for loss, not only money, but loss of respect, loss of relationships, and loss of responsibilities. So I'm asking, and agreeing with the others who are, that you will vote against video gambling, not to serve money, but to really serve our values in our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we began this with the presentation from the city administrator, so we didn't take a motion, so I need somebody to make a motion in a second here as we can vote on this.
Motion that we accept ordinance 1670 authorizing video gaming.
Second. Okay, we have a motion. Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Moved by Alderman Mueller, second by Alderman Bottermann, for the approval of ordinance 16-70 revising Title III and Title V of the Batavia Municipal Code authorizing video gambling. No further discussion. Alderman, start.
Um, Mayor Schalki, I, this is one that I have had a very hard time making a decision on, primarily because, um, the owners of the restaurants slash bars in town are right to some extent that people will take their money and go to another town to gamble. And if it's the case where they're going out and they're eating something, they're going to take that money with them. Or they're having a few drinks at the bar and they're gambling, they're taking that money with them to our neighboring towns like North Aurora and St. Charles. And I'm around the Fox Valley all the time, and I honestly couldn't name three businesses in our, within 25 miles that have video gambling. So to me, it doesn't seem like it's a glaring problem in any of our communities in terms of appearances. And so that's something that, um, you know, I'm, I'm kind of grappling with. Um, a lot of times it comes down to, what do you want your town to look like? If I rewound and went back in town and, uh, time and said, do you want tattoo parlors on Wilson and Route 31? I would say absolutely not. That's not the town I want to live in. But that was a, a vote that was decided by the majority of the council, and I can live with that. Um, so then I say, okay, do I mind video gambling? You know, my husband and I gamble, you know, we don't gamble that much. When we do, we go to Iowa, we go other places. But again, we go for the purpose, like Alderman Chancet said, that's our destination. So this is a very, very hard decision. And I have heard from members of the community. I've also heard from local business owners. So it's, it's a really tough decision in, in which way that we want to go. Um, you know, I honestly, you know, I, I respect everyone who came out and talked tonight. I know it's difficult to get out and talk in front of council, but I also agree with the gentleman from, um, the VFW that a lot of supporters probably didn't come out tonight because they don't want people to point at them and say, oh, you're one of those gamblers who support this. So this is, it's, it's probably one of the harder decisions I've had to make since being on council.
Anybody else in the council? Want to make any comments? All right, we have a motion and second on the floor for the approval of ordinance 16-70. Court call the roll.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bottermann?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
No.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atchek?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chancet?
No.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chabadi?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Callahan?
No.
Eight to five?
Yeah.
So ordinance 16-70 is approved by a vote of eight to five. So that's, that's the vote. Okay, moving to item number 19, the administrator's report. Laura?
Just a few news items that I'd like to share. Um, this marks the ninth year that we've received the Certificate of Achievement for Financial Reporting Award since we started submitting back in 2007. Um, we, I attached a press release to my, my weekly report, and we're really proud of our finance director and her staff for achieving this award once again. I also wanted to point out that we're really proud to announce that Wendy Bidnerick has, uh, our human resources director, recently successfully passed the certification exam to become a certified labor relations professional through the National Public Employer Labor Relations Association. So kudos to Wendy as well. Um, some other bits of news on economic development, uh, property at the northeast corner of Radent and Douglas has recently sold, and the new ownership has presented plans to construct 102,000 square foot industrial warehouse office spec building. Uh, we also received the initial, I'm sorry, actually the Phase Two environmental reports back on Larson Becker. And they showed while there is some cleanup that is necessary, it is not, uh, significant and would allow us to do both our short-term plan of a parking area, and then also in the future, uh, if that was to be developed for commercial and/or residential, uh, should be no problem. Also wanted to note that, um, building permits and applications have been submitted for the Crash Champions Auto Body on Main Street and Windmill Manor Development on Hawks Drive. And our branding steering committee interviewed four different candidates for our branding project. We were able to narrow that down to, uh, one of those firms, and we'll be presenting that to Committee of the Whole in early December. And finally, a little update on Brayburn Marsh. Um, unfortunately, the Kane County Forest Preserve burn that they did on the east side was only intended for weed control, and it was extremely limited. So we're going to continue to push them to, uh, take better care of that east side. And then the week after Thanksgiving, we will be doing a burn on our portion of Brayburn Marsh, which is on the west side of Randall Road. Um, and currently, the, uh, Public Works Department is doing the final leaf pickup on the west side. And, um, then they will be going back to, uh, certain areas on the east side the week of the 28th to, uh, complete pickup over there. Uh, does anybody have any additional questions for me on anything?
Any questions, Laura? Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Uh, Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of meetings to announce. Uh, the Committee of the Whole is going to be meeting next Tuesday, November 29th. Uh, there's 16 items on that agenda. So I don't know if anybody has an issue. We're starting that meeting at 7:00. It might be a good idea if we can.
We've got to do the Alderman interview that night, too.
Maybe we ought to start at 6:30?
I may be working till 7:00. I will arrive. I'll just be late.
Well, we can certainly put that near the end of the meeting, so we can make sure everybody. I would be most concerned, that's the thing I'd like to have most of you there for.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's a lot of, lot of items on the agenda, and we're trying not to do too much as far as meetings go in December, so we do need to get these items taken care of.
Well, I think a lot of them are pretty quick items.
Seven o'clock, let's do 7:00. Can we do seven?
That should be fine. Yeah, let's do that.
Try to preview them. If any questions, get them to staff beforehand, so we can frankly... All right, so 7:00 on November 29th, we'll, we'll have the Committee of the Whole meeting. The only item for community development is the discussion on the annexation on the south end of Fox River. Um, other than that, the next city council meeting is December 5th at 7:30. And the next Committee of the Whole meeting after next week is December 9th at 7:30. And Plan Commission's next meeting is, we don't have a Plan Commission next, next Wednesday, Scott?
September 7?
There is, there's a Plan Commission.
Okay, so the next Plan Commission is next Wednesday, November 30th at 7:30. And Historic Preservation, their next one is not until December 12th.
November 28?
November 28th.
I'm sorry?
Historic Preservation. Did you say that one already?
Okay, Historic Preservation's next one is November 28th. I'm sorry, 5:30. So I have...
Government Services, Alderman Atchek?
Uh, yes. On the Committee of the Whole meeting on November 29th, we have a lot of finance issues to discuss. Uh, repealing the end date for the Home Rule Sales Tax, Budget Amendment to Transfer to the Street Improvement Fund, Budget Amendment to Transfer to TIF 1, Budget Resolution for 2017, uh, Ordinance for the Tax Levy for 2017, um, an Ordinance for the Tax Levy SSA Number 30, and Ordinance for the Tax Levies SSA Number 57, and Discussion of a Fund Balance Policy. That's what we have. That's it.
So 15 minutes?
I, I, you know what, I, it probably won't take that long, actually, Peggy. Don't you think it will go pretty quickly?
I hope so.
Some of them are kind of, you know...
I mean, with the staff here to kind of shelter or shepherd it along, I think it'll move rather rapidly. There's not a lot of controversy there as much as information, so...
Right.
Okay, City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Even though there's a huge agenda for the November 29th council meeting, there's nothing for City Services on it. It's what happens between leaves and snow.
Uh, Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Uh, Your Honor, we have, uh, we'll be discussing authorizing a contract with Arcon Construction for Directional Boring for a warehouse on Douglas Road. Then we'll be discussing, uh, awarding a contract to Hooper Corporation for the, uh, Austin Fabian Transmission Line. Uh, we'll be discussing, uh, executing an agreement for assignments to SE Ellen for a master service agreement. And lastly, we'll be, uh, amending the official zoning map for a planned development overlay Batavia Wastewater Treatment Plant on South Shumway.
Okay. All right, do we have under 21? Do we have other business? Anybody?
Dave, did you mention we won't be here tomorrow night?
No meeting tomorrow night?
Okay.
Yeah, there's no meeting tomorrow. We, you know, we started doing a little, there's a bunch of you who are going to be absent, and it was going to be really difficult to try to do anything substantive. It's the, generally, the holiday issue that we face every year. That's why I had suggested that we get everything, we needed to get wrapped up by December 19th, because you get beyond that, and if you've been here a while, you know how difficult it sometimes is to get a quorum or an agenda grouped together after that point in time.
May I, may I say something, Your Honor? I, I just wanted to get it out because it just didn't sit well with me earlier this evening. And I probably should have said it earlier, but, uh, when, when a lady was up here speaking regarding the budget and thought that there was some, you know, staff and Peggy was being disingenuous, uh, you know, regarding about tax increases. I didn't see any of that at all. Uh, you know, we, we discussed our budget for two nights, but, you know, three or four hours each night. And, uh, and so there's nothing disingenuous about that. So I just wanted to say it. I should have said it earlier, and I apologize to you, Peggy. Uh, our staff has worked very hard on, on the budget. You know, as Laura had said, you know, for the seven or eight, past seven or eight years, uh, Peggy has won awards for our financial reporting. And , uh, she takes it very serious, as do the members of the, the city council here, how we are tasked with watching over your tax dollars. And so I just wanted to get that on TV and, and, and let people know. And I, I only wish I had brought that up earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, going to the mayor's report, just a couple of quick things. Uh, number one, uh, I had the opportunity to go with Laura Newman and Gary Holm and a couple of other, other of our staff members and Chief Shira. And we all went up to IDOT in Schaumburg and had a meeting reference flashing signals on state highways. And as you know, we now have five or whatever it is, and we have several over on Route 31, and we have, uh, several over on Route 25. And so, uh, I know the State Transportation Secretary personally, he and I have worked together in Chicago for a number of years in previous jobs he's had. So I had the opportunity to chat with him, and he says that he's of the opinion that the state needs to look at this and, and maybe take a, some change in direction on what they will or will not allow as far as flashing red signals on state highways. And, uh, so I'm optimistic hearing that. But when we went up to the meeting, we were told, and he had told me the same thing, you have to appreciate that when the IDOT makes a ruling on something like this, this is a pretty broad and important ruling, and it has statewide implications. So before they can make any final decision on it, they have to involve all their local, uh, districts, as they call them, on this, from the IDOT as to who can and, you know, who wants to say something, or whether it's in far southern Illinois or northwest Illinois. So, uh, they have organized a team, and we met with a couple of members of the team, were sat in on the IDOT meeting we had with them. I thought they were very cordial. They wouldn't make any commitment, but they indicated that, uh, this is going to be about a year in the making before they're going to be able to finally give us a decision as to what they will or will not allow. In the meantime, you know, I've, I was up there, I believe it was October 26th, we were up to the meeting, and I, I watched with great interest, I don't know if that's the right word, uh, when I come up to one of the signals on 25 or 31. And I, it scares me because there's a lot of drivers that just seem to just blow right through them and don't know what that flashing yellow means or what, what it should mean. And so I, you know, I guess there's not a lot of public education we can do because when it's on a state highway, it has to be done in, in a statewide manner, and they're the ones that are, are going to call the shot. Uh, I will tell you that as far as my relationships with some of these folks, it would be to continue to kind of lobby, if that's the proper word, or encourage them to let us enact some type of flashing red, which would then mandate that everybody come to a screeching halt when they see somebody's trying to cross the street. Because we do have, I've seen it on both 25 and 31 now, where people just keep on, and we've had a couple of minor skirmishes already with people getting brushed by cars or whatever have you. Hopefully, if nothing else, if the thing is flashing yellow, it has a tendency maybe to slow people down, but I'm not sure that's the case. But, so, just so you know, I, you know, I was told by the Assistant Transportation Secretary up at Schaumburg the day we were there that, you know, Batavia is kind of one of the leaders in the test case here, and they're watching us with interest, and they know us, and so they have some faith that we'll work with them on this. So I don't know where we're going, but they did indicate that we probably are going to have to wait about a year before they're going to be wanting to make a final decision as to any change in policy on these. Uh, but it would, when they do it, he's, you know, it's going to be a statewide policy that will impact every municipality out there and every state highway. So obviously, they have to be cautious and seriously study what it is they are or are not going to allow before they do it. But, uh, we're, we're in the, we're in the mix, if, if nothing else, and we'll see where we go with it. The other thing I was going to comment, Laura already is doing her excellent job that she's doing for us. Uh, she already mentioned it, but, uh, we've had several conversations about the Brayburn Marsh. And last week, Chief Dyke and I got in his car and drove out to Brayburn Subdivision and got out and walked the entire marsh area out there. And, uh, it's, to me, it's kind of scary what I see there because there's, there's a lot of brush there that's two or three years old, and it grew up there last year, and then it fell over. And so it's still laying there as kind of a big firepit of, of debris underneath what you see growing out of there now as you look at it. So it, it, I, I find it very problematic, and I know the chief and his men and women would be very challenged if, you know, something were to happen out there some night and that thing started on fire. And we've had those things. We had that happen last year at the cornfield there behind Cole's and Sam's Club, and it was quite a scary moment there. We got the fire department in there pretty quick, and they brought in the brush pumpers, and we got it under control. But it, it was pretty impressive, and I guess that's not the right word for it, but pretty, uh, awestrucking as to what it looked like when that thing starts. So there would be a number of residents in, uh, Windomer and, you know, the, the area of Trout Farm, and certainly Brayburn Subdivision, I'm sure would have a lot of angst if that thing ever started on fire. So I think I'm pushing my, using my offices to push with the county and the county forest preserve, who is one that controls the piece between Route, uh, Fabian Parkway and Randall Road there to the north of the movie theater, that we really need to have an ongoing, probably almost yearly program about burning that thing off. The idea that we're just letting that thing sit there for two or three years and grow and die, and the debris lays there at the bottom, and new grows up next spring, we're just adding to the fire load in that thing. And we really need to kind of burn that off with great regularity. And I'm not, if I don't see anything, I'm not, I guess we are, you know, we budgeted some money in, in the budgets to take care of this, but this could be something that we've, we've bought ourselves kind of an interesting little thing there, that I'm not sure when we did it, we really knew what the ramifications were going to be. And I think the ramifications of that are going to be that every year we're going to have to burn that thing off. And I just wanted to go on record as saying that because I, it is a very intense, it's one of the biggest fire loads I know... one of the biggest fire loads I know that we got sitting in this town that needs to be addressed. And hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to burn big chunks of it off. But I'm waiting with great anticipation to do it. In the meantime, I'm bending the ear of those on the county board and in the county administration about the need for that thing to be continuously watched as to what we're going to have. So just so you know, we're making some noise about that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I feel like I would be remiss if I did not mention the Batavia Access Toy Drive tonight.
Right.
And I'd like to thank everybody who came and donated toys for us tonight. They're laid out nice on these tables. But just to put the word out there to everyone in the audience and everyone who might be watching on BATV, that the Batavia Access Toy Drive gives hundreds of children in our community the only possible chance they would have at a happy Christmas. And so we urge you to make a donation of unwrapped toys to either one of our fire stations, or you can also drop them off at the Batavia Public Library as well. If you'd like to drop off a gift card donation or a check made out to Batavia Access to the Batavia Police Department, they are accepting those types of cash and gift card donations as well. So we encourage everybody to be generous and help out a wonderful cause that's a perfect example of how this community cares for each and every one of us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Alderman Brown had entertained the motion.
I move, adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman O'Brien. Court take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.